For it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. See, I don't have my glasses on. I can't see. Perfect. Thank you. Your co-host too on it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Pass the baton back to the treasurer.
Again, Treasurer and Commissioner Amin, five B zero four, but here I am putting a motion on the floor that A and C five B approves fiscal year twenty fiscal year FY twenty quarterly financial report for.
I second. The motion has been placed on the floor.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Uh, yeah, I had, sorry, kid ton. Um, so, and I had this question on the other meeting. It looks like we have some of these categories, for example, CIT is under communication and under office supplies. Is there reason for that?
Yep, he answered it last time.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Colley.
Sorry, what was the answer? Because we have, why do we have it in two different places?
It was initially in the, um, in one category and after working with Dawn Dickerson from the Office of A and C, she had stipulated that that information would be moved to a new category. So.
But my understanding is the new category was supposed to be office, direct office, correct?
But previously, you have to remember this was Q four fiscal year twenty, and that's the information, and that's how it was logged in, and that's how it was billed, and that's how it was paid. And we can't go back and change it because it came from under that line item. And it's already taken place. The bus has already left the trailer. We had to.
My understanding is that we categorize.
When we start trying to re-categorize the information that was not already in the system, we properly noted the correct spot in which that line item should have been.
I guess I'm just, I'm confused because we talked about it was going to go forward. It was going to be in direct office, but right now it's showing half of it is under communication and half of it is under office supply. So.
Well, we are also talking about fiscal year twenty Q four. That was in the past. We cannot go back. So from this point moving forward, as we stated in the meeting last time, we'll be categorizing it.
Then my second question is still around that extra check. It looks like there is check twelve fifty-five that shows it was lost and never cashed, but it's still showing up as an expense.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a stop payment. I think we talked about that in the last meeting too, Commissioner. That check twelve fifty-five would have been a stop payment. The corrections have been made in the workbook and it will show up. The workbook will correct itself. It was, uh, we had to put a stop payment on it, and we talked about that at the last meeting. So I'd like to move forward, Madam Chair.
Sorry, you were, you were gonna ask, you were gonna clear out for us why it didn't show, like, why it wasn't removed from the total? Because right now it's factoring into the twenty-two, twenty-five direct office cost, even though it's supposed to be sixteen hundred.
It won't, it won't fix itself until after we are able to get this approved and move on, and move on to the next quarter, and you will see it in the next quarterly report as the information is approved. But as.
Yeah, it's when it was actually written. Yeah, it was written in that particular quarter, so it has to post in that quarter. And then, this is why I said, let's put a little asterisk down there so that, you know, that if anyone looks at the report, it could, you know, kind of represent that, uh, yeah, that check was written in that quarter. However, is going to basically, uh, come up and be put back into the budget in another quarter.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Colley. That's exactly what we'll discuss. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we approve FY twenty Q four report.
All right, I second the motion again. The motion has been placed on the floor to approve Q four quarterly report and has been seconded. Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Q four fiscal year twenty budget. Uh, may I say aye, will do a roll. Five B O.
Aye.
Aye.
B O three.
Nay.
Five B O four.
Support.
Five B O five.
Uh, nay.
Five B O two. In favor. The motion has been placed on the floor and seconded. And, um, and been approved. Three yays, two nays, and no abstentions. Um, the next one hour agenda is the, um, FY twenty-one. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Amin.
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that A and C five B approves the FY, uh, FY twenty-one, uh, submitted budget.
Can we, I have some questions from last week. Commissioner Amin, you were going to, uh, we were gonna, um, clear up some stuff that Commissioner Harley and I had questions about, and then I don't think that that's been done. Can you, um, so we just want to be clear because one of these budgets is already, one of these line items is already in the red. So are we approving that we're already in the red and over on something?
I, again, Commissioner, I think that you read the correspondence that we received today. We only control, as Commissioners and as Treasurer, the line item, uh, D, category D. After the information has been properly submitted, the categories in the red will correct themselves on the worksheet, and that will reflect on the budget. That's a soft, that's a software issue that, uh, that again, that that's something that O A and C needs to, uh, address with, with you or with anyone who, or with anyone who's interested in explaining how the software works. So that's, that's not us.
One of these categories, sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up. Can you, uh, can you pull it up on the screen, please?
I, I, I can't, Commissioner. Can you pull it up on the screen?
Um, I don't have the latest one. Oh, here, if I can pull it up on our website, one sec. Um, and then while I'm doing this, um, I wanted to, have we distributed this to the community for input as required by law? I don't think we have, and we haven't given the required seven days. But I just want to be clear that we have not sent this around.
Have you sent it out to your, has any other Commissioners sent it out to constituents?
I've sent it out to mine.
Okay.
I, I don't think it was on, there was no link on Commissioner Amin's email that he forwarded to us that had it. It said that there was a vote, but I don't think that it's been distributed.
Okay, but what I'm, I'm asking all Commissioners, individually, you receive the budget information, the quarterly reports. Um, and as I understand it, the information was posted in our Google Doc. If I'm not mistaken, that's not open for the public?
Um, I, I think, I think, uh, with the budget, I think if we post it on the website and, uh, and let them know that, you know, it's available. I think, you know, it's a financial report that it's not going to reach everybody. So that's the whole point of putting it on the website, to make sure everybody knows where to go to find it.
So Commissioner, um, Kara, as our Secretary, did you place that information on the website?
It did, but it did not go up until Sunday night because we were expecting a revised budget. So the notice went up six days in advance, not seven.
Well, for special meetings, it doesn't have to be seven days.
Okay, but it did not go up, uh, until Sunday night, or maybe it was Monday when Commissioner Amin said there was no revised budget coming.
So a question for you. When you receive the initial budget for the meeting that we were trying to have previous, I think all Commissioners got it, um, for the May meeting, all Commissioners, correct?
Correct.
And that information was also, um, up on, um, we shared it with the people that were just on the call. So all Commissioners received the budget. When you received the budget initially, did any, so Commissioner Kara, you did not put that budget that Commissioner Amin sent for us to vote on up on the website?
No, because as you'll recall, we got it thirty minutes before our meeting started, so I did not put it up when we were the only time.
Since the meeting in May, which was May twenty-something.
Six.
Yeah, no, we were supposed to be, at our Cal meeting, it was even, we were supposed to be getting a revised version because there were some questions about the actual. So I didn't put it up because my understanding is they're revising it. No, we were, it was not accurate.
Edited or not, because initially from my understanding, when Commissioner Amin sent the information out, that was the budget and we were prepared to vote on it. Um, from my other understanding was that you have requested that certain things be done and annotations be made. Um, as stated at that meeting and in the Cal, we had also discussed that that could not take place because of the way that that spreadsheet was produced, um, and that we could not put annotations on it. But, wait, I'm just want to finish my sentence, that we would have an in-house copy, and if I'm misspeaking, I'm sorry. We would have an in-house copy that, um, we could put those asterisks and annotations on so we could have in-house. So I just want to be very clear that this budget, the same budget that we're looking at now, and, um, was submitted to all Commissioners prior to our May twenty-six meeting. Even when we scheduled this meeting, all Commissioners had this budget. It was not placed on our website. Yet, even if we were waiting for something to be revised, which it was not, it was still not placed on our website.
It was not.
By our Secretary. So it wasn't available to the public viewing because it was not placed there.
Correct. My understanding based on our meeting, because as you'll recall, and I can share the minutes from our last one. For example, when we had the question about the direct office cost, why it includes more than what our rent entails. Uh, Commissioner Amin said he was going to check and get back to us. So thinking that the information was incorrect, I did not put it up.
Okay, so that was a decision you made?
Yes, it was. You're right. But, but now we're understanding that it's correct. I still have the same question. I mean, if this is what we're going, then I still have the same question as to why our direct office cost includes more than our rent. Our rent is fifty-five, or five hundred fifty, um, that should be sixty-six hundred dollars, and we have seventy-two hundred baked in there.
Commissioner Amin?
I, I, I think that that's, that goes to the, uh, to the answer that Commissioner Colley provided just a few minutes ago, that I provided earlier, that now being informed by the Office of the O A C, moving forward, you will see, uh, you, you will see that, uh, direct office costs, uh, will, will include that, uh, the rent as well as the CIT, the CIT contract moving forward. Remember, this is fiscal, uh, year twenty-one budget. Now, when we move forward in the next few months, seeing, uh, with fiscal twenty-two budget, you will see it all included underneath category two, direct office cost. We will work on that as a Commission. So as we move forward, and my responsibilities as the Treasurer and not doing back reports, but as doing the forward report, that's the direction we're going in, uh, Commissioner Pecara. Thank you.
So just in a follow-up question. So if I'm understanding you correctly, the seventy-two hundred is more than our office cost because it includes some of the CIT expenses, correct?
Yeah, CIT expenses would be in that category, and that was, and after careful consideration with O A and C, it was, uh, conversations about the CIT contract. That's why, uh, after, and talking to Chair Higgins, this is why we decided to put that, uh, that seventy-two hundred there, uh, and not just the six thousand, six hundred there, Commissioner. Could I move for a vote, Madam Chair?
I still have questions. Can you, so then if that's where the CIT is, can you explain what thirty-two fifty for communication is and the six hundred for office supplies?
Yes, Commissioner, the thirty-two, uh, the thirty-two, uh, twenty, thirty-two fifty for communications would be cellphone for one year, as you know, which.
Okay.
We did an estimate of, uh, average, my average of about two hundred and fifty a month, so that gives us three thousand. And then as, then also as you and I and the whole, uh, Commission discussed about acquiring a new hosting site, and I think the number that you gave us was approximately like nineteen or twenty dollars per month. And there you get your thirty-two fifty, uh, you get your thirty-two fifty for your communications in that category.
And so where is the, where is the hosting cost that we've already incurred at thirty-five dollars a month?
I, again, as you also know, Commissioner, that those are receipts. Part of those receipts were never turned in, so they, they don't show up at all. And, and the receipts that showed up years before for that thirty-five dollar cost would be under, uh, would be under communications. That would be that, it would be a W P line. It would say W P.
And then can you, so now that we have cellphone and the printer taken care of, can you explain what the six hundred under the office supplies is?
Well, six hundred office supplies are there if we.
Isn't that projected?
Sorry, Commissioner, can I hear you? Commissioner Colley?
Isn't that projected?
Yes, it is projected.
Thank you, Commissioner Colley. That is, that is projected, case, case we, case we need it. Uh, it could mean that we need it for, say, if we need to buy something new for the office. Let's say we needed a new, uh, a new computer, uh, in a year. Okay, we need it, uh, uh, you know, something else, like some normal office supplies. Exactly what it says there. So it is projected.
On the, on the email that you kindly sent to Dawn today, which was really, really helpful, her answer to the question was, says, no, the worksheet is not designated designed for projections. It tracks actual expenditures.
Uh, let me, that was, uh, Commissioner, that, go ahead, Commissioner.
But if we haven't, if we haven't, um, uh, in FY, uh, twenty-one, if we haven't hit, uh, Q two, Q three, or let's say Q four, how can it be accurate?
Well, but we have, we're in Q three right now.
Right, but the budget should have been done in January, so it would have been projected.
December, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. But it would have been projected.
So, but we're doing it now, so we're, we're guessing that we would have spent four seventy-six in Q one, or are we saying that we did spend four seventy-six in Q one?
Projected.
Yeah, we projected to spend that amount for each quarter. If we don't spend it, that does it, that's not a bad thing.
I guess, so same thing with grants. So we're, we didn't actually pay out any grants in Q one?
Actually, we haven't filed Q one yet, Commissioner. Remember this, we just, we just voted to approve Q four.
But I, I guess it's in that, what, my question is, is there any money left in the, in Q one? It says we have a thousand dollars in grants. Is that thousand dollars already spent or not?
We, we had, we did give out, and you will see it when the Q one report, um, rolls out. Hopefully, within the next, uh, few days, or next week, I should say, you would see that with the supporting documents that we did issue two grants in, in, uh, Q one.
So with that in mind, and thank you, Commissioner Colley, for flagging that if these are projections, so it sounds like we might not have spent all of the money that we allotted in Q one. Um, can we amend the budget to include more grants than just the thousand that have already been cut?
We can't do it right now because we have to wait for the information to recalculate itself. If you look on the budget that you have on the screen, you have something in green. You have something in red. Some of those items were already spent. And so therefore, it, all of this, it will be different. That's why we need to get through this portion so we can see what we have left over. And it's, and it's done by the spreadsheet. Nothing, Gottlieb sent you the spreadsheet? Um, so you can take a look at it. Huh, I'm sorry.
The spreadsheet Gottlieb sent was, it's a blank template.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, but again, this is where we are. In order for us to move forward, we would need to go ahead and.
Yeah, I, I just, since we've agreed that this is projected, these numbers are not hard numbers that are already spent. If we are talking about projections, I'd like us to project to give more grants than we have on the thousand there. So I think that's what this point is.
Also, understand that grants aren't, aren't necessarily a part of what the A and C does. This is a caveat to the community. Um, so, uh, and, and it's very important to those that are trying to, um, conduct certain activities. But grants are not a number one priority, um, when it comes to the work of the A and C.
I agree. I just think that this budget setting exercise is.
But until we're able to get our actual numbers, there's, there's no point in trying to pull something out of Commissioner Amin when he won't know until we get everything taken care of and the numbers recalculate themselves. So yes, there may, there may be additional dollars to do additional grants.
But, um, the grants that we usually, the grants that we usually distribute, um, per Commissioner, is it not capped at five hundred?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, per, per grant. So I mean, I would like, you know, that doesn't mean that we have to do just two five hundred dollar grants.
Per Commissioner, per year.
But you have to, wait a minute, wait a minute, but you have to understand that based on the money we had previously, that's why we set that in place. So it wasn't something that the A and C said, oh, we'll give you a cap of five hundred. No, that's not what took place. The A, A and C five B had additional dollars available, and we had additional monies in our bank account. So we, with the monies left over, said, okay, we can take this twenty-five hundred dollars, and each Commissioner can have five hundred dollars to give as a grant to someone in their constituency. So that wasn't the cap. This is a cap we had based on the additional dollars that we had had in our account. So that will happen this time. If we have the additional dollars, then we'll see what that looks like, and then we can break that down amongst all five Commissioners. But to say it will be five hundred or it has to be five hundred, that's not the case because sometimes it was two fifty, sometimes it was only two hundred.
But. Was it ever over five hundred?
Um, not as long as I've been a Commissioner. I can't speak before I was a Commissioner.
No, I appreciate it. I mean, I think, my question is, again, if we are, this approved, you know, we are looking at this highlighted yellow column. This is in talking to Gottlieb. That's the numbers we're focused on. That's what we are saying. Yes, we want to allocate seventy-two hundred to the office. We want to allocate the two fifty to communication. I guess my point is, if the, since this is projected, and that's what we're voting off of, none of this is hard and fast numbers yet. We don't know where those are, but since this is projected, and this is where we would like to, I would like us to consider spending more money towards the grant. You're right, Commissioner Higgins, we are not required to. Um, but I think it is a very subjective perspective on what we think is most important. Some Commissioners might think printers and cellphones in offices are more important, and some Commissioners might think that, um, grants are. And so I'm, I'm weighing in and saying that for me, uh, the grants is the priority. And so I would like us to consider reallocating more funds to that, taking some of the funds away from the other categories, since those are all projected.
Right. And again, prior to you even coming on board as a Commissioner, that was a priority for all of us as well. So this isn't just you, you having a priority for grants, because if we didn't think it was a priority, um, initially, um, that's not something, you know, the Commission body would have done. So this isn't just something new for you or anyone else. But if you take a look at that first column that you were just speaking in reference to for fiscal year twenty-one, you'll see that we have, um, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. What is that number down below, the last number in our end imbalance? Could anybody tell me what that is?
That's four sixty-nine.
Four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So if we wanted to give, um, some additional dollars to a grant, to the grant, we would give that four sixty-nine because, first of all, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't approve a budget if we've gone over the amount that's allocated. We can only work within the parameters that are set before us. So.
I, I just think, can we reallocate from one category to the other?
Okay, and I stated that once the information is fully in the system and it recalculates itself, yes, we can go back and look at that and reallocate other dollars to other line items. Yes, we can. We said that previously.
So is there a reason, are we, is there a reason we're not waiting until we have those numbers so what we're voting on is accurate? Because it sounds like what you're saying is that the numbers in this yellow column aren't actually, that, that money might not. Be assigned to that category. So sorry, I, just one moment. So, you know, we're saying that seventy-two hundred might not actually be to office expenses. So why are we voting on it right now if we know?
I was talking specifically to the grant. That's not what I said. That's what you said. What I said was to increase that line item because everything else is in place with the numbers as Commissioner Amin has set it up with the Office of A and C to help get through the process. If we were to add additional dollars to that grant line item with the numbers that we already have, it would take us over. So my suggestion, which is a suggestion, is to wait until this recalculates itself. We know exactly how much money we will have available so we can make adjustments on the line items. But it appears that what you want to do at this juncture is change, make the changes now and move forward. Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying, if we are going to vote on this and we're going to vote, if we can still move the money around, I'd like us to vote on putting more money into the grants. And then if we have to, to your point, move it in a different category to pay for something else, then we can take that up. But if we are setting this as projected, where we would like our money to go, um, you know, or at the very least, like, I don't use the A and C cellphone. I use Google Voice, which is free. Like, can I at the very least reallocate the funds that my, my constituents would be paying for that so we can go towards a grant for my community?
Right, well, it doesn't begin and end with you.
Don't you think it's important that we, uh, get the, um, our allotments in so that we can see exactly what we have? There, I mean, there's never been a problem with us getting our money in, like, we've received three allotments at one time ago. Oh, you know what? We're close to, uh, or back in, in September when we, you know, convene again, we would say, wow, okay, we got the money now. I think we have enough to allocate money for, uh, the, um, the grants.
I, I guess, I, I don't understand why we're going through this part of, let's decide what category we want each money in. If we're not going to say, okay, then let's, let's move stuff around. If, if we're saying that we have to wait until all the money is in and the totals are accurate, I agree with that. But then I don't know why we're putting on something that we know isn't correct.
They're projected, and we're doing it so we can get our allotment, so we, we can basically know what we're working with.
So let me, let me try it this way. Our office is fifty-five hundred dollars, or, um, five thousand, not five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
We're not ignorant. I understand. You said the same three, four times.
I'm making a proposal. Sir, please let me finish. I'm making a proposal.
But don't make me, don't make us feel like we are ignorant and we don't understand.
I'm not doing that.
Yeah, you have done that. You did it three times.
Please let me finish. I would like to.
We move for a vote, Madam Chair.
I would like to reallocate. I'd like to reallocate the eight hundred dollars that's extra because our direct office cost is only five hundred and fifty. I'd like to reallocate that extra money into our grant. So our grants would go up to seventeen hundred, and the line item for direct office cost would be sixty-five hundred, which. And the line item for direct office cost would be sixty five hundred, which is our five fifty rent for twelve months.
Noted. Thank you.
Is that a motion for an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, seconded.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the budget for the vote. All those say.
Can I have a call? Ever welcome.
Would you please allow me to? I've been doing it all evening. ANC five B zero one.
ANC five B zero two. I'm listening. And you know, I have distributed grants in the past, and I plan on doing that again. And I don't think that this is an urgent need to, you know, vote on right now. It's not like it's not going to happen. So I'm going to abstain.
Okay, five B O three.
I vote in favor of it.
Five B O four.
No.
Five B O five.
Yes.
Five B O two, no. The motion is tied. It has not moved up the floor. Is there another motion to
I can recount Milan for no.
Again, okay, motion has been placed on the floor and seconded to amend the ANC five B twenty twenty one budget. ANC five B zero one.
No.
ANC five B O three.
Yes.
ANC five B O four.
No.
ANC five B zero five.
Yes.
ANC five B O two, no. The motion has been placed on the floor and seconded and did not go through. Commissioner Amin, please place your motion on the floor.
I place a motion on the floor, Commissioners, that ANC five B approves fiscal year budget twenty one as in front of them.
I second the motion. Call for the vote.
Point of work, point of order. When does the public have an opportunity to weigh in?
Oh, you missed that full conversation, Commissioner Pecara. We had a discussion.
Yeah, I heard about the
Wait, are you, are you asking a question or you answering and asking?
Seven days' notice is required for all meetings, D.C. law. So I'm just curious.
This is a special meeting and there is not a seven day.
It says in D.C. law, all meetings. It doesn't specify what kind.
Okay, if you don't believe what I am saying, you guys can reach out to Gottlieb at the ANC office. Please.
Happy to, happy to do that. D.C. law also says that members of the public should be given an opportunity to weigh in on the budget. And so the point of order is, the point of order is, when will the public have that opportunity before we adopt the budget?
Thank you so much for asking that question. Again, the information was sent to Commissioner Pecara. Commissioner Pecara did not post that information on the website. I asked the Commissioners if they had sent out the information to their constituency. Commissioner Pecara stated that she had. You did not answer, Commissioner Amin.
Yes.
My, my audio cut off, I think, when you were having that discussion. But, but it doesn't, I don't think it matters when notice was sent out. The issue is that
It should have been sent out. Some of us did and some of us did not. And again, our Secretary did not, after the information was placed, given to her, did not because she felt that the information needed to be revised. And Commissioner Amin said, stated that he would send her a revised copy. But Commissioner Pecara did not place the information on the website for public viewing.
So, just to clarify, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, give me one second. So the law says that, that the Commission shall present the budget at a public meeting to elicit comments from the residents. And so I'm, I'm wondering when that public meeting for
That public meeting was May twenty six, Commissioner Pecara.
We did discuss the budget.
We sure did, May twenty six, ma'am.
We didn't, we didn't open it up to a public conference.
Well, that was during the Treasurer's Report.
We did present the budget and the information before the public, which was May twenty six.
Did we elicit public comments? Because this was all done during the Treasurer's Report when the public wasn't invited to speak. The public comment period was not at that point.
Okay.
So my question, my point of order still stands. When will the public be given an opportunity to weigh in on the budget?
When the Secretary of ANC five B posts the information on the website.
So is this the meeting when the public should be weighing in, or is there going to be a future meeting before we adopt the budget?
Do we let them weigh in tonight?
Yes, we can. That's what I'm sorry. Actually, they can weigh in now.
So are we going to withdraw the motion so that the public can weigh in? Because we do still have a pending motion. So if we're going to move
Yeah, we can table it. But yeah, the motion has been tabled. We're having a discussion. So
I second it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I think your computer might have cut out. I think you got disconnected.
Oh.
I think she got disconnected. Was anybody able to hear what she said?
My name is Commissioner Higgins.
Oh, okay. It looked like you got cut off.
No, my lips weren't moving.
Oh, okay. It looked like your computer got cut off because you disappeared from the screen. Would you mind
But I'm still here. So we're gonna, are we opening up the meeting for comments? Hello?
I would like us to open up the meeting for comments, yes.
Okay.
So for anyone in the public, I think they can, are they able to unmute themselves or?
Anybody can unmute themselves.
Well, sometimes we've had settings that hasn't allowed that. So let me check.
It is only seven thousand dollars to discuss. What a budget. Just finish with it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Thank you, Alex.
I have some comments from my constituent who is not on call, Donia Rahimi. But she did email me today and ask that some of this be put out there. So she says that she would like to see the request applications for grants released. And she would also like us to prioritize grants and community outreach over things like cell, cell phones. She, she has asked that we explain why we are in negative, like, we've had negative balances to start and commit to build a cash reserve so that one day we can fund meaningful community projects. She's also asked that we focus on not losing checks and not incurring late fees. She wants us to be more diligent about interrogating our spending to ensure that we are being prudent, we are benefiting the community. And the spending reflects community input, which is actively seeking out stakeholders to weigh in rather than trying to force it through online.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Am I back on one?
Yes, Commissioner Carley, we can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, please open your mics.
I would like to support the, I guess, motion to move the Google Voice funds that would have otherwise gone towards cell phones into community grants. I think that that's a really good way to fairly allocate this money that is not being spent in other parts of five B.
Thank you so much for your comments. Please, everyone, please feel free to make your comments. Please, we're here to listen. Anybody else? Please unmute yourselves and please ask any questions or make any statements you like. Okay. It looks like there are no others. Does anybody else have any comments? Commissioners? Commissioners? All right. So we'll go back to Commissioner Amin.
Commissioners, I would like to replace on the floor that ANC five B approved their fiscal year twenty one budget that, that has been reviewed and discussed by the Commission and the community.
Second, I second the motion. Call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting the ANC five B fiscal year twenty twenty one budget, say, well, five B O one.
I do not think this is going to in any way hinder or take away from the money that we are going to distribute to the community. I support the budget so we can get our allocation and get the money out into the community.
Thank you. Five B O three.
I think that if we are committed to allocating grants to the community, then our budget should reflect it. Saying after the fact that we're going to move things around doesn't seem very fair. I think if we have a budget in front of us, we should reflect our priorities. And unfortunately, I do not think that this budget reflects the best interest in our community. So I reject this budget.
Five B O four.
Support.
Five B O five.
Oppose.
Five B O two. I support the budget. The eyes have it, three eyes, two nays, and zero abstentions. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We really appreciate your time and that ends our meeting for this evening. Have a fantastic evening and a fantastic weekend.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for coming out this evening.